Good evening and welcome to the March fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, meeting of the Milton School Committee. This meeting was originally scheduled as a meeting with the Warrant Committee, but the school committee felt, in light of recent events, specifically an incident which occurred at the Pierce Middle School last week, that it was important for us to not only have some dialogue amongst ourselves, but with the broader Milton community. So fortunately, we have with us two partners that have been critical over the last several months in helping us to respond to a series of incidents, which I'll talk about in a minute, but we have with us Rabbi Alfred Benjamin and Police Chief John King. I'd like to have both of you join us at the table, if you would. Over the last several months, the Milton community has been tested in several different ways. Last year, the Holocaust Memorial at the Milton Cemetery was desecrated. In December, the Pierce Middle School had an incident where there was graffiti indicating or depicting swastikas. And again, last week, there was another incident where graffiti depicted swastikas. These are incidents that we take seriously as a community. And I think one of the things that we treasure most about the town of Milton is that when it has been called upon to affirm its commitment to diversity and inclusion, it has done that. In both instances that the schools have experienced over the last few months, we have been pleased, I think, with the response, with the leadership that our Superintendent and Pierce Middle School Principal, Dr. Karen Spalding, have shown. I think there was a feeling amongst all of us that the response was timely, it was thoughtful, it was comprehensive. But I think one of the things that we heard from some of the parents who spoke to us last time, and I think even more importantly, at this moment, that this really needs to be a community response. It can't simply be a response from the administration or from the school committee. So I think that tonight, we'd like to talk a little bit about looking forward, what are some things we might think about? The Rabbi has what I think is an extraordinary idea about a town-wide initiative, so I'd like to ask him to talk about that in just a moment, and then the Police Chief as well, just to give us some guidance on going forward, what are some things that he might find helpful in supporting the Milton Police Department and the extraordinary job that they do. One piece of legal advice and a ground rule, so to speak, we were reminded by legal counsel that we cannot talk about the specific incident, we cannot talk about the details, we cannot talk about the response, and we certainly cannot talk about any individuals who may have been involved. So with that as a ground rule, I'd like to have Rabbi and Chief King open, then we'll have citizens speak, I think we have a few people that would like to do citizens speak, and then open it up for the school committee. Thank you. Yep?
At some point in the hour in the discussion, can you talk about the policies of how the schools have responded, not about the individual situations, but the discipline, their steps, because that's what we've got a lot of questions on. So at some point tonight, you talked about that.
So may I, may I?
Sure.
So if I might.
Can you hear you guys very well?
Yeah, unfortunately, the coffee's percolating, so we just all have to talk a little bit high.
Why don't you just pull that off?
All right, I'll put, I'll do it. You got it, Karen? Okay.
Chairman Walker, if it was agreeable with you, may I ask Dr. Karen Spalding to join the Rabbi and Police Chief?
She articulated to Kristen Bagley-Jones's question very clearly what happened at the Pierce School, so when the time is appropriate, so may I ask her to join us at the table?
Absolutely, and I just want to make sure we follow the legal advice we were given.
Right, just whatever, the only thing she's going to articulate for the viewing public, who might not, Dr. Spalding, will you join us at the table? The only thing that Dr. Spalding will articulate is the letter that went out to the Pierce Community and then went out to the entire Milton Public School Community attached to my email. So later in the discussion, remember Bagley-Jones asked what had happened at the Pierce School follow-up, and you articulated clearly, and so when appropriate, Chairman Walker, you might, might ask you to share the four points that you shared with the public. Thank you.
Certainly. Rabbi Benjamin, if you would.
Thank you for inviting me, but I do occasionally wear two yarmulkes at the same time. One is as a representative of the synagogue, especially on the Blue Hills, but it seems that primarily I'm being asked to speak today, and that is as a member of the Milton Interfaith Clergy Association, and that we as a group came up with, and so actually, I think Eric and I invited Reverend Paul Kirkham to his meeting, asking him to come, I thought, talking me through the other yarmulke. And also Lisa at St. Michael's, and.
Okay. And also Reverend Lisa Ward at the Unitarian Universalist Church. Both of them have been instrumental in gathering together all of the voices of the Interfaith Clergy Association to come up with this initiative, which we've entitled, "It's Time to Talk About Hate." It's, as you said, it's time for a community response, and our goal is to gather together partners, throughout leaders, throughout Milton, who will get behind this initiative, where we want to create, with experts in the field, age-appropriate guidelines for parents to be able to have a conversation with their children, K through 12, at home. You can imagine around the dinner table, a serious conversation, and have guidelines that are age-appropriate, and that's where we would want help also from the school, to say, okay, this is the guideline page for children K through two, three through five, whatever, and then we will create these, we'll send them home through the school, and then parents who've had this conversation with their children will be able to then have a public forum to sign up and say, on this big list, as a communal response, to how important it is for us to declare loud and clearly and publicly that this is unacceptable, it's not the nature of our town, it's not the personality of our town, so that parents can say, so-and-so, parent of a fourth grader, we've had this conversation, and I just imagine the length of this list getting longer and longer and longer, K through 12. And that, I think, is the kind of response, a tidal wave response against this, this act and similar acts, and it's about any act of hate. It's about civility, it's about respect, it's about dealing with these kinds of things, if you see it. So again, create these, I think it'll take some time for us to really put together thoughtful conversation sheets, but I really think that it's the kind of program that will really have powerful impact about what we say about ourselves and what the world can know about this little town of Milton. And just so you know, as of the past forty-eight hours even, both local Milton baseball leagues have signed on, Milton Academy has signed on, St. Mary's of the Hills has signed on to this, all of our selectmen individually communicating, nodded through a meeting, just making sure people know that. Our town moderator, chief of police, I'd love if there's a teachers' union for them to sign on, all that, we're looking forward to having all of the PTOs, in other words, to say, these are all of our partners, and it'll make it a town priority. And it's a conversation that we know the school cannot be solely responsible for, it's impossible, it's wrong for this issue to just be placed on your plate. You have a pretty full plate. No ti, I don't have tissues, I'm sorry, I don't have tissues. And it's our time to back you up, so that, because of all the time you back us up.
Thank you. Chief, what are, what are some ways that we can be helpful to you as a community, as you try to help us combat some of these things which may in fact be crimes?
You know, this incident, you know, as you mentioned, just I can't really comment on the particulars, but any time we have hate crime, specifically hate crime in the schools, the most important thing which I think everybody in this room realizes is, you know, it doesn't just affect that one victim or that one vandal, it really does impact a larger community. And, you know, what we're seeing here in town, you've seen nationally lately, there's been a significant uptick in hate crimes throughout the country, and a lot of them are, you know, targeted in certain groups, there's been a huge incline in the Jewish community, the Muslim polyglotization, you know, it goes across the spectrum, but there's definitely been a recent uptick, which is lama, and, you know, locally, we've had a couple incidents at the school. You know, the first step of, is, you know, prevention, obviously, everybody wants to prevent it rather than have to deal with these situations after the fact. You know, credit to the schools, and I say this sincerely, the school committee and the superintendent, you know, it starts with basically training for all staff, you know, prevention training, you know, you don't have to do it alone, there's lots of resources, you know, we can work on together, the Justice Department, the Anti-Defamation League, the District Attorney's Office, you know, credit to District Attorney Morrissey, I spoke with him about this incident, and he called me back from Mexico while in another country, so it tells you how important he takes this, and, you know, he mentioned specifically me, him and Mary sitting down and, you know, going over possibly some policies or some trainings that we could do with the school. So, you know, prevention's huge, partnerships, you know, as Rabbi mentioned, you know, Mike is a great resource, the Milton Interfaith Clergy Association, you know, the other groups I mentioned, the Anti-Defamation League, I've called them quite often on issues like this. Every time, they offer resources that, like, you can't imagine, they go above and beyond. The Police Department, I always will offer our resources to the school, superintendents, principals like Dr. Spalding, the school committee, whatever you need. You know, policies, again, this is something the school's already working on, that's usually the other big prevention aspect, describing the behavior that's prohibited, you know, particularly when you get to middle schools, you might have to be a little more specific, because, you know, kids might not realize through common sense what is a prohibited action versus what isn't, where a kid who's a senior in high school might realize it. And I think, you know, this has to be age-appropriate, as the Rabbi mentioned, and, you know, those policies should leave some leeway in the sense of, you know, we are dealing with a crime, you're correct, Mr. Walker, but, you know, we recognize, and I'm sure the school recognizes, that there's a big difference between an eleven-year-old potential suspect at a middle school versus, you know, an eighteen-year-old potential suspect at the high school. And, you know, we should investigate them thoroughly, both cases, you know, we should have a strong response, we should have a community response, but maybe the outcomes should be different, depending upon who that person is. So that's the prevention aspect, the other aspect, unfortunately, you know, if that all fails, you know, we got to deal with a response. The response, you know, investigations, you know, really have to take kind of two paths, one a school investigation, one a police investigation. We work jointly on that, but, you know, there's different requirements, the schools have certain legal requirements, we have certain legal requirements, but, you know, the key is to be timely on both of those investigations, they should occur simultaneously, we shouldn't wait for the schools, the schools shouldn't wait for us. You know, we treat it like a serious crime, because it is one, you know, we gather evidence, we conduct searches, we take photographs, it's not, you know, simply just grabbing two kids and talking to them. It's a very thorough investigation, and again, you got to remember, you know, the outcome should always be fair, but there are two possible outcomes, the criminal one and the school one. And again, I just reiterate, I think we should keep, you know, a variety of options available, from counseling involving the parents, dependent upon their response, training, community service, to, you know, criminal action in the courts. You know, that's the investigative response, there is also the community response, as the Rabbi mentioned, and, you know, like, initiatives that, you know, he's undertaken with the clergy. You know, the best way to do that is through constant communications, you know, the schools put out a message, you know, as detailed as they probably could be and as transparent as they could be without breaking any laws, they get that out to the larger community, you know, they took the extra steps, not just notifying parents and school officials, excuse me, and town officials, but, you know, reaching out personally to the clergy, reaching out personally to the Police Department. You know, that is a community response, and then I think when you see, you know, citizens here in the audience, I've got hundreds of emails probably, I've got dozens of phone calls, I can imagine what the Rabbi and other members of the community have got, and that is a community response, you know, people are fired up, and I think that's a good thing. So, you know, that's kind of an overview of how we handle them, you know.
Great, thank you. Dr. Spalding, you want to talk about the points you raised in your letter to the Pierce Community?
First, I just want to thank all of the community members who are here, who reached out to me, especially Rabbi Benjamin, as well as Chief King, and certainly the school committee. The, they say we're not supposed to take our work personally, but you can't not take your work personally when you're in education, and those of you who are in the field know that. And what, the way I sort of think of the last couple of months, both the first incidents as well as the most recent, is we have a positive power to reframe and re-script, and we have that positive power through the love, compassion, collaboration, desire to be a part of a strong, positive community that is here in Milton. And that, that is the light that, that I hold on to and sort of keep in the forefront, and so I've appreciated the emails and the feedback and the insight that have come from all over. So thank you to everyone for that. And so some of the re-scripting or setting the positive motion forward that we've been doing at Pierce, we did reach out to the anti, we reached out to a number of organizations, one of which was the Anti-Defamation League with the first set of incidents, we do have a group of students who are attending their annual conference, actually, this month. So we have some student leaders who are going to that. In addition, the ADL will be coming to us to present closer to the end of the year, to provide an overview of their peer leadership program, which we will implement starting in the fall. We wanted to start it right away, but they slowed us down and said, no, you really have, you want to start at the beginning of the year, so, but they will be coming to give students sort of an overview of the work and what it means to be a peer leader. There's a very intensive training for students, as well as staff who will supervise. Part of that is also attending a sort of summit in the summer for teachers who are interested, teachers and administrators, we already have a group, myself included, who are excited about going, so that will take place over the summer, facilitated by the ADL. So we already had that work in motion. I did reach out to the ADL again, just this past Friday, to do a check-in about some of the pieces that we were doing and putting into place, as well as Rabbi Benjamin gave me permission to share the initiative that he and other faith leaders and other organizations in Milton have put into action, so the ADL is working on collecting some resources that might be helpful for that as well, and they'll get back in touch with me this week about that. In addition to that, we have a teacher leader group that keeps getting bigger every day, it will eventually be all of the teachers, I imagine, at the Pierce Middle School, but we began, we gathered in response to the first, or after, the first set of incidents. We call ourselves, "We Are Pierce," because we haven't come up with a better name, and that kind of captures really what our response has been, my response, what my response has been to students, as well as sort of our thinking about this work, and that is that we are Pierce. Those incidents are not Pierce, that's not what we're about, that's not who we are. We are Pierce, and we will set the agenda, we will set the forward momentum on what that means, and so that's really the work ahead. So we are working with a gentleman by the name of Dr. Carlos Hoyt, who is a social worker by training, but is also trained in diversity training and working with faculty, working with administrators and teachers and families on issues of diversity, and so he is working with our group. We've done some work around self-reflecting on social justice, what strengths and challenges we have ahead, or we think we have ahead at the Pierce Middle School. In addition to that, we are putting together a sort of a professional development string of experiences for next year, engaging in some of our own as this group, but then also for the Fuller staff, and then also really working on some ideas of really, again, re-scripting for Pierce and, and putting our foot forward in terms of defining who we are at the Pierce Middle School and the visible ways in which we can do that, tapping into some of the already powerful structures that exist at Pierce, like a team structure and things like that, so we are doing some of that work as well. And then the Student Council has been working as well on building off of the assemblies that I had done with students back in January, of sort of building this presence for what does it mean to be a member of the Pierce community, and who are we, and so that's some work that they've been doing as well.
Rabbi?
So now with my other yarmulke. On behalf of the congregation, and Karen Friedman Hannah, our president, and our board, and all of our members, I want to say how much we appreciate the support and encouragement we've received, not only from the administration of the school, but you and the letter that you sent to our congregation that has been shared throughout our community. If you think about what makes a rope strong and a string weak, it's that a weak, a string, you can just take it and you can pull it and you break it apart, but you take that exact same string and you add twenty strings to it, and you twine them all together, and you just can't break it. And that's how we feel, we feel embraced, we feel weaved into the fabric of this community, we feel that sense of embrace, and it means a lot to us, so thank you.
Let's move to citizens speak, and then we'll come back to Superintendent Gormly, if you'd like to say a few words. First, we have Cara Kurtzman. Anywhere?
Yep, my name is Cara Kurtzman, my daughter Sophie is in eighth grade at Pierce Middle School, and my initial reaction the other night was, what do we do as a community? Because this doesn't sit squarely in Dr. Spalding's lap, it falls to all of us as parents and as teachers and as community members, and so I'm thrilled that we have all of these things starting. But as I was talking to my daughter the other night, I was thinking about, again, what can we do together? And she's always talked about what an accepting community Pierce is, and that's what I want people to know about Milton. I want people to know that Pierce is actually loving and it embraces diversity and tolerance. And so my idea is that as a community, we come together and do something as simple as a vigil, really like peaceful and lovely, and maybe a couple of speakers, but I think it sends a really powerful message about what we, as residents of Milton, believe in, and what our community stands for, and even more importantly, I think it's really empowering for our kids, because it gives them an opportunity to stand in front of their school and say, this is what we're about, we are about tolerance, we are about diversity, we are not about hate, and we are not about antisemitism, and we are not about anti-anything. And so I think that's the most important thing, is how do we empower our children to move forward and do something positive for themselves and for our community within Milton and outside of Milton? I think it's really, I've lived on the South Shore my whole life, and I know the people that live here, and I'm proud of where I live, and I feel like people within Milton, outside Milton, throughout the state, need to know what we're about. And I think it's a really simple act of solidarity that we can show our community and the outside community as well. And I would like to do it as soon as possible, if, if that was something that people agree about, I think it needs to happen soon, and I think that, I hope nothing happens as we move forward, but if we have more incidences as we move forward, I would love to see almost a spontaneous response the next time, so that, because that was my gut reaction, and I was in New York when it happened, my gut reaction was I wanted to go grab my sign and stand in front of Pierce. And so I would hope that, you know, hopefully, nothing will move, happen again, but if it does, that we all come together almost just as a gut response, and we go and we stand together. So, that's my idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jenny Mulqueen?
Well, I have a whole letter, but so many wonderful things have already been said this evening, so I don't want to be repetitive, but first, I would like to thank Superintendent Gormly and, and the MPS School Committee, and also Dr. Spalding, I'm so glad you're here, for your strong leadership, and also Rabbi Benjamin and Chief King, it really feels like the community is coming together around this. Your communications have been strong and swift, and your actions have seemed appropriate to scale. So when, when the news came last week, and as we just heard from Cara, it felt like a time to, okay, what, what is next? And we're hearing this from everybody, what, what can we do, what's the next step? So I'm, I'm going to just sort of skip to the end here and, and get down to the, my main questions, and I agree with Rabbi Benjamin, that while I am neither proposing that we can hope to entirely eradicate hate by bringing people together, nor that it is the responsibility solely of the Milton Public Schools, I do believe that the Milton Public Schools have a vital role to play in the conversation and the collaboration, so that's what we're here doing. And as a parent who has served on various committees and task forces, it has become clear that schools in, in our district are operating independently somewhat when it comes to cultural programs. Essentially, these programs are designed more to reflect the culture of the school than the overarching district and/or town culture. So many of these programs are quite promising and successful. Moving forward, my question is, is it possible for the school committee to support and implement unified district-wide policies and underlying practices that support a common civil culture throughout the entire school system, and that the messaging is unified? What accountability and measurables for efficacy will be put into place for cultural and civil programs? How do we, how do we stay with that? Is it a three-year program? And lastly, knowing that cultural change can neither happen quickly nor in a vacuum, how will the MPS administration and school committee work with Milton community leaders to engage parents, students, staff, as well as the extended Milton community in an ongoing town culture initiative around this? So thank you for your kind attention. I believe there's hope if we work together courageously. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent Gormly?
Thank you, Chairman Walker. On behalf of the Milton Public Schools, first, I want to thank Rabbi Benjamin and Chief King and the school committee, and recognize Dr. Karen Spalding. And so I think Dr. Spalding's remark in her letter, appalled and heartbroken, summarized how we all felt and how we feel. And so when an action like this occurs, first, you have to recognize it, and then you have to, as Dr. Spalding has at Pierce, and we'll detail at another meeting, in the district, move forward, and the theme tonight is that we're partnered with the parents and guardians of the Milton Public School children. And so we share the education of these children, and we're looking to move ahead and partner with the community. And so when Rabbi Benjamin shared the private and parochial schools and all the organizations in town, it's to Ms. Mulqueen's in town, it's to Ms. Mulqueen's point, if all of the individuals who work with our children, our students, have the same message. And that's the standard. And so I live and work in this community and you should know as your superintendent, every professional will tell you that what I say to new parents and guardians, individuals looking to move to the Milton Public Schools, or employees, the jewel of the Milton Public Schools, to Ms. Kurtzman's point, is its diversity. And so we have to celebrate its diversity, we have to educate every one of our students around the diversity. And I have to tell you, those who know me, I'll tell you, that I think that these are the most fortunate children in the Commonwealth. To go out into university, college, or to work, and they have since, Rabbi said, starting at kindergarten, they are being brought up in a diverse community. And so I'm committing the district, working with the school committee, the parents, and the greater community, to move forward. And education is powerful. To me, it's all about education. To educate our children so that they become the Chief Kings, the Rabbi Benjamins, these school committee members here tonight, and these individuals who came to this meeting tonight, and those who have contacted the chief, the rabbi, the school committee, and myself. So as the Milton Public Schools and your superintendent and on behalf of your teachers and administrators, we are committed to educating. And we will not stop until the work is done. And, you know, we follow what happens in other school districts and other communities. And I communicate almost hourly with Jim and Walker. And you are an excellent partner in leading this school district. But it's important for the community to know that Rabbi Benjamin and Chief King are the school's partners. And the communications we wrote, the messages that we sent, we did in collaboration with the rabbi and the police chief. And so on behalf of the Milton Public Schools, all of those in attendance tonight, in moving ahead, we are committed to educating every one of the students, future, current Milton Public School children, around tolerance and celebrating diversity and eliminating, calling out and eliminating any kind of hate in our community. Dr. Spalding eloquently articulated what is in place at the Pierce School. To Ms. Mulqueen's, we'll articulate district-wide. But tomorrow afternoon, we had already scheduled a session with Milton's attorney and our principals and administrators around hate crimes. So what is a hate crime? What is a hate crime? So everyone has to understand. And then we'll put that kind of professional development in place for our teachers. But first, our assistant principals, curriculum leaders, and school leaders, so that, and this was planned, so we do have a plan. And we, Dr. Spalding has led, really, you didn't give yourself enough credit, looking at several organizations, state and national organizations, and the relationship was there with the Anti-Defamation League. And so the partnering, short and long term, has begun. And as your superintendent, again, Dr. Spalding's remark, appalled and heartbroken, but we are committed to education and moving ahead.
Thank you Superintendent Gormly. I think it's important to remind ourselves how fortunate we are. And it has to do with the leadership that we get from Superintendent Gormly. You hear from time to time, you have to go outside your community sometimes to realize how fortunate you are. Ms. Varela, Dr. Craighead, and I went to a conference last year, Mass Association of School Committees, and we got the opportunity to talk to various school committee members from other towns, who superintendents don't talk to them, whose superintendents don't lead, whose, it's just, it was amazing. And we often said, wow, we don't experience anything like that. So I just wanted to say thank you at a time when you're experiencing a crisis or at a time when you're simply managing the extraordinary challenge of running a school district from day to day. We have the luxury of being completely confident that things are in good hands. So thank you. Ms. Bagley Jones.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to all of you who have come, but also some of the questions that I've been getting. Well, first, I should say that Dr. Spalding and her comment about appalled and heartbreaking is really true for her, from knowing her, but also for Mary and Janet and Glenn and all of us, really heartbroken over this. A question I've been getting from a lot of parents has been, well, what's happening? What's going on? What did the schools do? And it's very frustrating for parents to not understand why we can't say, well, X, Y, and Z happened with this child. But one of the things I thought was really helpful to hear, and I think people, you know, can ask more questions about nonspecific things, was that the schools all have a handbook of discipline. We follow the handbook, we sign off on the handbooks every year. We may not remember every single thing that's in them, but we do read them and we sign off on it. And there is a progressive discipline that happens within the school system. And then the school system has really, the superintendent's office has really built this collaborative relationship with the rabbi, but also with the police, who are then also doing their own investigation. And that's what I just want to say to people so they know that that's happening. We are doing what we're supposed to be doing. We are all appalled and heartbroken and we work with the police so that everything that has to happen in terms of that can happen. And it's real, I don't know what happened, who the children were, and what happened to them, and nor do I want to and nor should I. What I do need to know is that my superintendent and the Pierce principal are doing exactly what they're supposed to be doing. And that's what we owe the community and school committee members. And from my opinion and my perspective, they are doing above and beyond what they should be doing, as that should be. So that's my editorial comment. I am interested in the prevention piece of it. I love what Dr. Spalding talked about. We are Pierce, the teachers grow, I mean, I couldn't even keep up with all the things that you've implemented. One of the things I think about are things like restorative justice and community service you mentioned, but in terms of not having kids say they're sorry, but of having kids on this offense or other offense that have to do with a hate crime, really have to take some emotional responsibility for what they've done. We're not there yet, we haven't started, or we may never start a restorative justice, but I think in hate crimes, we do have a restorative justice? Oh, okay. So we could hear more about that because I think that's what this takes, however that works out legally. Because of course, we also talk to our own legal folks about what we can and cannot do and what we can and cannot say. But the idea of kids having to take some responsibility, however that looks, I'm glad to hear that you're already working on that. I'm not surprised. But I just think that, anyway, I'll stop talking so other people can, oh, my last thought was the Milton High School leaders, the student leaders, that, you know, maybe they could work with some of the middle schools, they could get some of the training as well. And they're usually a pretty dedicated group of students who care about things like that. And I think having older students go down to the middle school. And we have one of the best bullying prevention policies and practices on board. We were very early, one of the first in Massachusetts to do it, and the team did a fantastic job. And I think that those instances can be applied to this as well, but we might need to have another policy, Dr. Donahue Committee, around the hate crimes, even though the bullying policy is fantastic. Anyway, and that's all I have to say.
Dr. Donahue.
Hello. That was an excellent segue into some of the things that I wanted to talk about because, you know, as we sort of, as we look at this incident and the background, you know, there are really two components to it. There's how we deal with this incident and how we manage the fallout from it. And then what policies we put in place to prevent future incidents. And, you know, to some extent, they overlap, but to some extent, they're separate. And one of the things that I really took away from when we worked on the policy last year, thank you, one of the things that I really took away from the policy that we worked on last spring with commemoration, was that when you bring experts in, subject matter experts in, and they have expertise in terms of how to, how to manage, you know, a crisis like this in the immediate short term, days and weeks, you know, and then as that moves into months, you know, sometimes the advice becomes more intuitive. But in particular, some of their advice about how you set up policies that give yourself a chance to create a firewall. Because for me personally, one of the facets to this is that it sort of comes on the heels of these other incidents. And, you know, we're not talking about something that's sort of spread out over, well, you know, multiple years or an extended period of time, but it's a relatively short time period. So, you know, I think as we move forward, if we look at best practices and how to incorporate those into a policy and incorporate some of those facets so that we give ourselves a chance to breathe and react as a community before something snowballs into a bigger incident, that would be very helpful. And, you know, I think the ADL is a great resource, but there are probably other resources out there that we could, you know, engage and pull from on that front.
Ms. Varela.
So I too want to thank everyone for being here tonight. But I especially want to speak to the interfaith clergy and putting together that it's time to talk about hate on a community-wide level. I can't say enough about when I first heard about that last week and read about it and read about the initiative. I think that that is going to make a big difference because when I personally heard about this happening again, and, you know, the first thing we even discussed at our dinner table, you know, why is this happening again? And, you know, and all of the action steps that Dr. Spalding spoke of that were already in motion because of the December incident. You know, I often feel, you know, we work very hard here on the school committee, very proud of the committee, I'm proud of the superintendents in the district, but, you know, we, it does sometimes feel like we can't do it alone. So that community support and that peace is really what I feel is needed because I do think that these children need to hear it from everywhere. So the fact that Rabbi Benjamin mentioned that you have baseball leagues in both the private and parochial schools, and that this is going to be discussed and brought to everyone's attention and brought to parents' attention, so that if your athletic organizations are doing it and you're on the sidelines and you're talking about it, you know, they're going to understand this, you know, the significance of what a hate crime is. And I just think that's going to be a huge portion of how it takes a village to help educate and bring awareness to that. And I'm, I mean, I think Dr. Spalding, yeah, as member Bagley Jones said, the action items that you've put in place, there's so many of them, and that's great, but it needs to happen from all different venues. And I'm very, very grateful and applaud, you know, again, whatever the school committee and the district can do, I mean, we'll assist and be part of that team. But the fact that more outside organizations are speaking to that and getting the parents to stop and look at it and pay attention and sign it and say, we've had the discussion in this household about it, I think that will make a huge, you know, huge effect. So thank you so much for that. I think it's going to be a great step in this process.
Dr. Craighead.
First of all, I'd like to echo Ms. Varela's sentiments. That's exactly what I was going to say, is that I think that this does need to be addressed through the broader community as well as the schools. The incident last fall, as well as this one, really shook me to my core. And I don't think it's just because I'm on the school committee or because I'm an educator myself, or because a huge portion of my family is Jewish, or because some members of my family are actually members of the synagogue here in Milton. My daughter is in third grade and she's good friends with an individual who's in sixth grade at Pierce. And so she knows all about what happened. And in fact, on a lighter note, we were driving home from school today and I said to her, I think it would be hard to be a dog walker for a living right now when all the, you know, the sidewalks haven't necessarily been shoveled and people are walking in the roads and so forth. And I said, I think it would be challenging to do that now. And she said, Mama, I think it's challenging to be the principal of Pierce Middle School right now. And so I think Dr. Spalding has a really hard job. So you have a supporter out there in third grade. But, so I do think it needs to be handled on a community level, and I think that we need to further the education of our students within the schools, but definitely broaden it. And I heard from the rabbi personally the other day about this, no, it's time to talk about hate idea. And I was really taken by it because of the fact that it wasn't just sort of, its origin point wasn't within the schools, but within the larger community. So I wholeheartedly support that, as well as the many things that Dr. Spalding talked about. And I'm hoping that I have the ability to attend that summer session training, if the superintendent allows it. Anyway, thank you all for being here and for speaking so eloquently to the issues.
Ms. Abraham.
I echo all of my fellow school committee members' thoughts. And when Dr. Spalding said she takes it personally, I know what she means when you work and you care for other people's children every day. It's like, you know, a slash across your soul when something happens that's so against everything you believe. I do think that the initiative of it's time to talk about hate will be extremely helpful because, well, I think assemblies and large gatherings are really powerful. It's the one-on-one conversations that you have with people, and especially for young children and young adults, that make all the difference for them. And I really think that that's an important piece for them. And I also think, just thinking out loud as a district, that we talked about the different ways that curriculum touches upon these topics. Assistant Superintendent Sheehan presented us with a document that showed that. But I really think it's important to think about how, in the education that we do with children, whether it's in our literature, in our history classes, in any classes that we work with them, how do we help them to understand symbols of hate and the way that you can educate them to really get them to internalize that from the time they're in preschool all the way through the rest of their lives? Because, you know, someone might now be less likely to write a racial slur or something, but a swastika is such a powerful symbol of hate in a horrible time in our history. And I really think that that's a piece that we can explore and think about as we go forward as a district. And I thank everyone for their work and I look forward to the initiatives to come.
Thank you all. One more citizen speak? Yeah?
My name's Jen Erby Leggett and I'm speaking both as a parent and as a mental health professional. I can't applaud you all more in terms of the response that we've had from the whole community. I think these incidents have obviously been upsetting to everybody. I, in my work, in my practice, I see a lot of extremely anxious middle schoolers and elementary schoolers and high school kids. And I know my poor children have a therapist for a mother, so I, you know, we always talk about feelings all the time. There's a lot of kids who are extremely anxious about these events and the progression of the events. And I know that's what keeps everybody heartbroken after all of these occurrences. And I think, I applaud every single step that has been mentioned. I also love the idea of a vigil, quite frankly, because it gives people something to do, to gather, you know, so hopefully we don't need another, you know, hopefully there won't be another incident, we don't need to do that. But I also think that the Milton Public Schools does an exceptional job of promoting positive culture within the community, as the whole community does. And so I would love to see us, the schools, speak even louder about the positive community building things that already happen within the schools. I think it's the right thing to do, to talk about hate and to respond to this. And next to it, I'd love to see like Principal Jonathan Redden's kindness campaign that we've been reading about. This is the perfect sort of antidote to that in a way. You know, kids are coming to school and they see kindness awards, okay? So yes, we have to make it really clear that this is no place for hate. However, there's a really positive expression of- However, there's a really positive expression of our community values. I'd love to see that very campaign stretched through all the elementary schools. I'd love to see Pierce Middle School, you know, kids walk in this week with art, maybe the art teachers could do some things about positive expressions of what's accepted at Pierce Middle School, you know, really talking about kindness, friendship, community building, those sorts of things. Because I think a lot of kids are very anxious about this. There is some talk amongst the kids about what's going to happen to that kid. You know, and I keep saying, it's neither appropriate for us to know, nor is it any of our business. We're trusting our leaders. We know that things are going to be taken care of, but also, it's a time when we know there's hate, there's dark feelings around all over the place. So, to pretend that it's just these three kids or something is also just not true. So, I think, you know, there's a lot of those feelings going around all over the place. So, to have a really clear sort of volume turning up on all the really wonderful, positive community building things that already happen at the school so that when the kids walk in, they see those sorts of things, I think would be another really important step, you know, to just highlight what's already going on that I think would also really bring down their anxiety as well. So, just offering you that. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to take an eight-minute recess while we switch and then reconvene with the Warren Committee. Thank you.